Good evening, everyone. In accordance with the opening minutes meeting act, this meeting has been sent to the retrospect and posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall. First item on the agenda is the public comment. If there is anyone in the room that would like to speak to the commissioners, now is the time. And after we've gone through, we'll go to anyone on Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom that wants to speak to the commissioners?
They're still connecting.
Just waiting to see if Christina wants to do anything. She's still trying to connect. Christina, while you were joining us, it came time for anyone wanting to speak to the commissioners. Do you want to speak to the commissioners at this time?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no public comments, we're going to move on to a resolution to authorize awarding of bids for the downtown block located on block thirteen, lot twenty-five. This is the final step in the demolition of the building. As you are aware, previously, we had all the asbestos removed in a previous contract, and now the building is just the building, block building itself. We received thirteen bids, with the low bid being Tamco Construction of one hundred and eighty-two thousand eight oh seven. Do I have a motion to award?
Just a quick question about that. We had budgeted a certain amount. Do you remember what the total was? I tried to find it before the meeting, and it couldn't find it.
So, yes, I thought you wanted to discuss that later. Yes, so we budgeted originally one, almost one point four million dollars for demolition of Cooley. After we take this out, the previous funding that's been spent, some money for inspections, money for bonding, we'll have about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars left.
Okay, good. And we delayed putting the, or we put this back out to bid?
The hazmat was put back out to bid.
Okay.
This is the first bid for the actual construction for the building portion.
Okay.
This is, this will finalize everything and get it to.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Do I have a motion to pass the resolution?
Motion. Second.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
Commissioner Sadeau?
In favor.
Commissioner Bianco, buzz it.
In favor.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, that, well, that should hopefully be able to get that completed in the next month to six weeks. Next item on the agenda is to discuss use of Borough property. We only have two requests this evening. The first one is the annual Jonas Cutel run. They, this kicks off at King's Court, and then they proceed to run quickly out of town. It is a rather small event, but they do request permission. Are we okay with this annual event?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, sure. They'd never turn a cannon onto the land if we didn't run every year.
The next one is Haddonfield Green Week, which is put on by the Environmental and Sustainable Haddonfield Committee. They are looking at April twenty-eighth through, through May fourth. The evenings of April twenty-eighth through May sixth, they have a nightly event at the public library with a whole variety of topics that, most of which are finalized, but they're still working on finalizing a few of them for folks that are interested in those types of things. What they are asking for in front of you this evening is the use of King's Court for that Saturday, May third. That is, they are, are looking at from ten to two P M. They want to have tables spread out. They're going to have a variety of different groups there handling different types of environmental issues. They're looking to have also some workshops there. Originally, they were going to have some of the workshops down at Crow's Woods, but we talked about the fact about how it would actually blend better having everything in one location. You might have a better attendance for it. So they are, those, that may be something as, as interesting as the bee fruit that they have. They actually have a beehive in an enclosed plexiglass container that they're able to bring around and show people how to collect, you know, they collect the honey and stuff. Looking at having a wildlife rescue there with possibly some of their animals. They've in the past had the raptors, they're looking at maybe bringing in some, potentially some beavers or other types of smaller animals. And then maybe a pet rescue. They're looking at a product for reducing food waste or reducing wasted food. And then also, the shade tree is working on some stuff, potentially maybe a pruning demonstration or possibly some videos, you know, showing on a screen there how to plant a tree properly, things like that.
May third is not going to supplant the farmer's market? That doesn't start yet?
No, that doesn't, they haven't even put it yet.
They have.
And that usually doesn't start until like the third week of May. Are we okay with them using King's Court on the third?
Just expanding that just a little bit. So to Sharon's point in the past, we've actually had it where it was the water trails down by Evans Pond, planting trees at Crow's Woods, some demonstrations at Crow's Woods, even the high school. One year, we had a demonstration one year. King's Court, I mean, it's just, it's a lot for the volunteers to kind of get from point A to point B. So the discussion was to try to keep it to more contained area, which is how it came to two areas here. And they discussed, they know about Heather is seating set aside in King's Court as well. So they're building that equation too, that they're going to have tents around that and won't disrupt that area.
Oh, you mean boy destiny?
Yeah, 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 there were that.
Okay. Yep.
Lot of hard work went into this, and it's still going into it, but. For the library uses, is that just inside or is that inside in the lawn?
That's just inside right now. Their evening activities probably down in the classroom.
Oh, okay.
Last year, the raptors were outside at King, in, in front of the library, in Library Point. Part of it too is trying to confine it to one place to get a better attendant. We were not getting great attendance at some of the stuff. All locations.
Yeah. Okay, I'm good.
Everybody good?
Yeah, thank you.
Partnership's aware of this if they want to.
Yes, they're actually, Michael's been working with them also.
Yeah.
Yep, sounds great.
We're good? All right. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is to discuss the potential of a traffic light at Coles Mill and Grove. The county engineer reached out to me. They are looking at potentially putting, adding an additional traffic light in town. The purpose is, as they work, walk through, the organization's trying to do the trail and possibly having access to the vertical or different types of things. They're concerned about pedestrian crossing there. And so this is what brought about, they've done the warrants. They can, they can meet the warrants to, to get the traffic light there. The reason they're asking our permission is because once they actually pay to install it, it's then our responsibility to maintain it.
Sharon, if I could just, if I could, just for anyone interested in this, so this is separate and apart from the public safety produced process, which Chief Cutler and I have been ongoing for the last few years with Coles Mill residents and the county to get it redesigned. So the intent there was to address stormwater runoff and outputs from some of the newer homes so that we prevent ponding and icing. It was to improve visibility with the grade and also the perception on the road so that if you feel it's narrower, you will drive slower. That's a, that's actually, there's a term for that, Chief. Traffic calming, yes. And, and there's a psychology behind that visibility issue. We also are adding crossing, crosswalks and signage. So all of that work is still ongoing. This is a separate project motivated by the link trail process and the safest opportunity for the county to consider an all-purpose trail. So the two projects are not dependent on one another. I want to make that clear for anyone who was worried that any holdup or timing of this. I even asked about like conduits for the lighting. And if, if we do move forward with this, that would not hold up the safety improvements that the chief and I have been working on. And I also did convey to the county, my desire would be for during the design or prior to just one more traffic warrant study because there's concerns from the chief and I in talking through the accident data, I think was a total of three minor accidents in four years. Chief, it was, it was very low. So, so the traffic, it's not accidents that warrant the light. It really is a volume and a circulation issue and pedestrian safety calming. So our ask of the county in the last week has been, would you do another study to look at the timing and the synchronizing of the light at Park and Grove where it's becoming, you know, Haddonfield Road by the armory there? Because that could prevent, that could produce like a significant bottleneck. Would there be a left turn only off of Coles onto Grove to improve circulation there and reduce some of the volume we get on the side streets that go parallel to Grove to avoid the cut through at Maple? Likely would now have our own residents trying to avoid the light on Grove at Coles. So that was just the ask we made would be an additional traffic study, but otherwise in favor of the, the proposed. I think the cost of maintenance every so many years is well worth what it could bring from a safety perspective.
And for anyone that travels Grove often, can get a little hairy at Coles Mill, especially rush hour.
And if you are a family that goes to Earlton, I don't, but everyone else in my neighborhood does, or if you have kids walking to Tatum and Christ the King and a high school there for the families living there, we, we are still putting in new sidewalks on Coles Mill, again, regardless of this light. But this would do a lot to facilitate safer travel for the kids coming and going.
I just think there's, that's already over, Susan. That was at the beginning on a work session. You know, I'm just applying a driver and the disparity of traffic, where you have, you have the light at seventy, then you have the light at Park, and an additional light at Coles as it is converging into a single lane and turning at the same time. And the volume of two, of Coles, I mean, of Grove is so much more than the stopable traffic for Coles Mill, except for, you know, the coming out. You know, they, it's the turning off of Coles on either direction, usually coming from Haddon Township that gets hairy, you know, during rush hour. So it's the rush hour things. I'm glad to ask for another study. If the primary driver is to improve lefts off of Coles, sure. If the, if it's to improve pedestrian safety, do they have anything of their call, call able lights where when they, you know, in the city sometimes in the middle, it, it never turns red unless you call it. And then the light will turn red. It gives you the fifteen, twenty seconds to get across the intersection, and then it goes back to green.
Right, they, they do have, that's where they have the other thing, what they're putting in front of the high school is push to, to warn that there's pedestrian traffic. It doesn't, it's not a whole traffic light setup. It's just yellow markers on the side alerting you that there's pedestrians trying to walk.
Yeah, sure. And that's a school zone, so, you know, you'd think they'd slow, but they don't. But, you know, the whole point of that, sure. Just, there's, just for consideration sake, you know, gift horses and all, you know, if the county's putting in the light, that's great, but if it just turns into a lot of waste of time when it's not rush hour for, for drivers, that, I wouldn't be too crazy about it, and I travel Grove every day.
I, I agree with you, David, being the mayor of the office today. If they were trying to solve the traffic problem of the left-hand turns, I'd be more for it. But the other way, just pedestrians, probably not more bang for your buck. You probably want to do, I would try at first, is maybe no left-hand turn between seven and nine, and four, six, or rush hour, what we have on Hopkins, what we have on King's Highway, to try, I mean, that's the cheapest, fastest way to do something. And then maybe in conjunction with the push to, to walk pedestrians, maybe that would be something, just by two cents.
Yeah.
Well, then the other concern is, you know, just thinking of that flashing light at Hopkins, we were backordered for how long or?
It's still, they sent us them all.
Right, well, you know, and so, so the point of it is, it, it's all well and good until it's on our back to replace, and we can't. So it just doesn't make us look good when we can't fix a light for two years. So that's just another thing to consider. Might be a great solution, but if we can't replace them and we don't carry stock of them, it's just another thing that's broken that people start to complain about.
So we'll wait to hear back from them after the next study.
Yeah, that's fine. They, they don't need a decision from us at this moment, so. And if anyone has questions that come up, just let, let us know. Chief or I can take them back. We're sharing, obviously.
No, it sounds like you're asking the right questions. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to talk about professional appointments. You can start conversation here and go in close. We're going to go in to close anyway to finalize it. Did receive three proposals, one from Mason Griffin Pearson, one from Amira Law, one, and the third one from Malamud and Associates. Mason Griffin Pearson is our current Affordable Housing Council.
Only comment I would say is, you know, the old expression, you don't change your horse midstream. And we're in the thick of a whole lot of this. So institutional knowledge carries a lot of weight in my book.
The next is the draft agenda for two-ten for next Monday. Deanna has provided in your packet the updated one with questions with all but one question answered. We still have to look into the virtual help. That has to be renewed every so much period. We just can't remember if that's, if this is one of those times. If it is, it'll stay on. If it's not, time for it to renew, we'll take it off and put it back on at the appropriate time.
And I want to just make clear for the record, for the sake of transparency, I just found out I am on a flight on Monday and due to return in the afternoon. But with everything that's going on in the world lately with air traffic and other things, I just want to put it out there that there is a chance I may not make it by seven-thirty to our meeting. I'm scheduled to come in well before that time, but I don't want there to be any question or doubt. That's why I would not be here. It is, it would be due to air travel.
Knocking wood for you.
Thank you.
The highlight of the February tenth is a return to the minute procedure to review minutes. So you'll all have a chance to review catching up on the voting meeting minutes and closed session minutes, and then in March, start to work through the working session minutes, which have a lot less voting on them, on the, firstly, not completely none, including tonight. But that's, that's, that's the pace of doing the catch-up for all the minute approvals.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
The rest of the items are fairly common. It's that time of year, the planning and zoning board, both professionals, the resolution's just on here for you to sign the contracts. Time to bid for a couple more. Do have, we've talked in the past about it's time to go out for trash and trash, trash, and then we also put alternates on there for recycling, veg waste, metal, just to see and make sure that it's not cheaper to outsource it than to keep it in-house on those items.
Now, are they request for a proposal or just information?
Which? The trash?
Yeah.
Or bids?
Oh, there actually are bids.
They're, they're formal bids. They actually have to, there's a specific process that the state puts out. You have to advertise it in a document that this, a newspaper, the state picks for that.
A statewide newspaper as well as a local paper.
And they have to be out for sixty days.
Okay.
There will be a pre, there'll be, there'll be a, a conference to answer any question.
Okay. We still have flexibility that we want to.
Make changes?
Reject and send it back out, we can, right?
Yes, we should, we, our contract is actually not until the end of August. So we did this, so one, we have information for budget purposes, and two, in case like last year or five years ago, we needed to reject and go back out, we're still within that time, not having to ask them to hold the contract.
Okay, great, good. Item twenty-four in the consent agenda, transferring deeds of the affordable housing properties from the borough to the utility. Does that actually?
That's.
What's that do for us?
That's the last two properties that we have on Tann, that we purchased on Tanner Street.
Okay.
And so that's putting that over to the nonprofit so that they, they actually were in the one building just the other day, going through with the inspector to kind of begin to look and see what needs to be done to be able to get it ready and, and get it rented out.
All right, but the other ones have already been transferred, so these.
Everything else.
Okay, oh, that's good.
And we worked out a deal with our JIF to allow, as an entity, somewhat of us, in that if for any reason they ever were to go, you know, to dissolve anything that they have, whether it be cash, you know, banking information or properties, comes back to us. So those properties are all covered by our insurance.
Even when they're in their hands? Okay. And then the other one, thank you, on the resolutions, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, grass cutting and cleaning of public bathrooms, that's.
Those are bids also. That's, that's, it's that time of year that we're doing that. So we will go out to bid for those and see what comes back.
Are we extending the, or expanding the public bathroom? Any changes to like the pace or quality of the clean or with, with the new recreation stuff that we're trying to do?
Everybody's been pretty happy. We started cleaning bathrooms two years ago for this process, and we're doing it two or three times a year. But everyone's been very happy with it, with the services, as far as that goes.
As an empire that has to change in the bathroom, the Haddonfield ones are better than they've been and better than some other towns now, before they used to be rough.
There you go. People are pretty happy.
I like the firsthand knowledge. That's appreciated.
Well.
Yeah, so.
Anything to touch the ground.
Yep. So we're going back out to bid for those and see what comes in. Any other questions on the agenda?
I don't have any questions, but one of the things I want to work to do over the next week or two, but because of my travel, I'm not sure I'll get to it before the March work session, Sharon, would just be, let's review all the potential or promised federal aid that we may now not get, like half a million dollars for the police headquarters. That's incredibly troublesome, and we have other programs. I don't know if it impacts senior services, if it impacts our firefighter application. That wasn't awarded yet, obviously, but we applied for almost quarter of a million dollars from FEMA. So chief, chief, I mean, we, in the public safety world, we are very concerned about the unsettling news of the last week, and we don't know what kind of executive orders will or won't come. So ideally, what I would do is draft, we would draft letters to our state congress and senators, congresspersons and senators, and then also the agencies, and send them written with resolutions and or like documentation, just asking our representatives to do everything they can to ensure that those promised dollars get funded and that, you know, they continue to support the public entities like our little municipalities here with all the applications we've put forth. So we can look at DOT, any, anything else that might be in the other departments I'm not aware of. But I've, I've talked to Chief Cutler, Chief Gorman, and I have to have a conversation. I don't think, it doesn't affect anything we got awarded yet, but safer. Okay. Okay. And I guess we also have to look at CDBG, if it impacts anything we would do for community facilities or accessibility. Those were my other two big ones. Thank you.
Yep.
We're moving on to other items? So.
Yes.
One of the things I'd like to bring up is a concern of the volunteer boards and groups that meet at Borough Hall before eight P M. on weeknights. Historically, they've never had to really worry about parking. You know, the lot's usually emptier and they can park out front. But the concern's been shared from planning, from zoning, from the, all the meetings that I've had, the volunteers are worried they're going to get tickets, and they really don't have any way to communicate to the traffic enforcement that their car, and they are here on official Borough business as a volunteer. So, you know, I think we need to come up with a way to let them, let parking enforcement know why they are in the lot, because I don't think it's right to pay, volunteer to have to pay a buck just to do their, their duty.
What we've done in the past is, and I don't think we just, I just think we didn't think about it for night meetings, anytime organizations meet for the day, we have passes we give each of the members.
Yeah, and for the night, I think we did talk about it, and we haven't been ticketing.
Enforcing that.
Yeah, we haven't been ticketing. Well, we know there's a planning, zoning. Yeah, because we have the meeting schedule, but happy to put that officially in communication. We've talked about this, maybe some didn't listen last time, but happy to communicate that to people again.
My advice until then was if you get a ticket, just bring it in and say, we were here for a meeting. You know, of course, that would work, but it's kind of a drag.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I told our parking enforcement, meeting nights, do not, the borough parks a lot back there.
No, that's.
It hasn't been a problem that I'm aware of.
We raised over four hundred thousand dollars in parking revenue in twenty-twenty-four, so they do their job.
They do.
Yeah, we can, I can have Joanna get something to Deanna to put out for all the board volunteers.
And that's gross receipts, not net income?
No, that's net, right? Six, it was.
Gross was six.
Six something.
Oh, six, oh.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yes. So we more than doubled our previous net.
Good.
Anything else before we open to the press? Any questions from the press?
We talked about the intersection with Coles Mill and Grove, so who pays for the traffic light?
The installation will be funded from state DOT funds, Brett, through the county. So. Yes, so streetlights on county roads are generally in all municipalities in the county. It's, it's the county's responsibility to install, design and construct, and it is our responsibility or the other municipalities for maintenance when they lapse or there's an issue.
Dave's point about the traffic. It, it is predominantly for traffic.
Well, that would depend on the timing. That's what the traffic warrant study to date really looked at, volume, incident frequency, and any of the data available to police and the engineers when they collected it. So the next step we're sort of asking for is that, let's look at the timing. If, if this was installed, would there be ways to make it so that we prevent a traffic nightmare and we keep it? We, we make it as safe as possible, but we're not creating a bottleneck. But to date, no, the, the purpose of the traffic warrant study is to say, does the, does the intersection even meet a threshold for the installation of a red, green, yellow light, like any signal at all? And it doesn't meet it for accidents, it only meets it for volume.
And then, to, to just in it, maybe the left turn kind of thing? Or?
Right, I, I, in, in lieu of a light, it depends on what the purpose of the light is. If it's just to try to decrease accidents or traffic volume taking a left-hand turn, I would try the left-hand turn, a no-left-hand turn sign between like seven A M. and nine A M. and four P M., six P M., like we have, we have a bunch of those around town. To see if that would mitigate the problem first. If we do that, then we have to study the, the timing at the light at Maple, because what will happen is, everybody that wants to take a left now will be forced onto Maple Avenue, and I don't believe that green light for Maple, that.
And I don't believe that green light for Maple to take a left on the Grove is the proper amount of timing if with all that traffic flows over there. So there's a lot of studies to be done depending on what, what they're going to stutter, why they want the track.
No, no, because the, the purpose is actually for the link trail. So the goal here is to reduce traffic overall because you're linking the access for bike and pedestrian. That's where this came from. They have Department of Rec money and DOT funding for the county park system. Yes. And it would connect the pocket park that's sort of right there, right, Sharon? Like so.
The county came to us.
Yes.
They, they felt that this is an issue or it's something that they wanted to solve.
And they looked at the other intersection, which would be at Park in the Cherry Hill right of way, right? Like if you're thinking of going up Grove, like where, where, before you get to Auto Lamberty and the parks on the right, um, the armory is on your left, that intersection does not have the proper clearance to, to link the trail there.
Yes. I see.
Yeah, you're biking all the time.
That doesn't, that doesn't protect trap, uh, the pedestrians. That doesn't address the pedestrians if you're doing a roundabout.
No, to my knowledge, not considered. But can't, but also we weren't a part of the initial study. That was something they looked at because it was us and or Cherry Hill. And they came to us after doing their initial warrant study. Instead, we think that your intersection is the better intersection. What do you think about? But happy to ask the county that question.
Any questions?
We're only to the press right now, Susan. We.
I have no, um, oh, you were talking about the possibility of funds from the. You haven't received any communication or whatever.
No, I think there's way too much chaos for us to get any formal communication, unfortunately.
You were talking about the police station.
Yeah. So our immediate concern i- i- in my departments, I can't speak for my colleagues here, but our immediate concern is that we have the $500,000 award from the USDA Community Facilities Corps. And that those funds haven't hit our account yet. We've been awarded, but that was awarded under the Biden administration. And the executive order recently said that everything essentially was stopped. And then there was all kinds of interpretations about random association of certain types of funds with certain goals or diversity, equity and inclusion, et cetera. And then we got guidance that didn't clarify anything really. And only for those of us waiting on our funds caused more concern and confusion. So the first priority we have is an award we were already promised that is set to fund our police facility because if we don't get that fund, we have to fund for that. And then to your point, the next is Chief Gorman and I and Sharon have applied for about a quarter million dollars from FEMA to outfit our firefighters with breathing apparatus called SCBA. And we are hopeful, we went through an entire process with FEMA to really vet the application because we've applied for this before. And so we really wanted to make our application as strong as possible. We did a lot of homework. We did meetings. We pulled the application together. That's very time consuming. And we were very hopeful that we would have a shot at getting that funding. And then also we've been looking to improve the firehouse with federal funds for just as we got the funding for the police station of half a million. We have ideas about improving the conditions of the firehouse. And all of those processes could be totally held up. So part CDBG, because that can make accessible, the, the building could become made accessible. But the community facilities funding that we got for the police station, the firehouse is also eligible for that. And so again, like we've done the legwork of having the meetings and preliminary looks at the application and walking through the buildings. And, you know, you really, I want to be able to plan for the time ahead, like, okay. And, and make sure that our budget this year isn't totally turned upside down. If we're making, if we're trying to make these investments and then we don't, we don't get those funds.
What's the source of funding for the $800,000 project at the Paco for the crosswalk?
DOT.
That's state DOT. Oh, okay.
Yeah. So those.
Paco had something to do with that.
Paco supported our.
Oh, just supported it, not supported it with funds.
No, they wrote in support and they have their own project that this will tie into. So again, and that's another thing, like when Sharon and I sit down to go through the stuff we have, we'll look at is, was there federal funding coming into the state DOT? Because to your point, Dave, if there was, then that might go away.
Sure.
But as of right now, that wasn't a concern yet. Same with Coles Mill. That's getting funded by DOT dollars. This county's light is DOT, but state. So if the Federal Transportation Trust Fund dollars. I don't know, Coles Mill is, Coles Mill is federal. Sorry. Yes. That's Federal Transportation Trust Fund dollars. So, but they already had that award.
That, yeah.
That money.
Through New Jersey DOT, but New Jersey DOT uses a lot of federal funds for their grants.
So that project, New Jersey DOT already has the funding in hand for our Coles Mill safety project for the length of the road.
Okay.
So we'll try to get updates on all that in the next two to three weeks. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Any other press questions? Hey, commissioners, we do have a closed session. Talk about personnel and potential contracts.
Make a motion to go into closed session. Second.
Voting on that motion, Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
Commissioner Seidel?
In favor.
And Commissioner Bianca Bessin?
In favor. Thank you.